Okay, I'm going to call the public session of the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Jim, you want to get some pledge?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Jim, and the agenda review. I have one item to add, which is statement regarding school care to the end of the chairperson's report. So maybe see section E is my report. Is there any other items that anyone would like to add to the agenda?
During the academic affairs, I'll just make a brief announcement about an additional meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next, is there anything else? Seeing none. Next is our student presentation. So I will hand it over to Spel Patty Morrissey to begin the student presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so excited you're all here. We love starting our season with the school board in October right here at Effingham Elementary. Our student presentation this evening focuses on a North American landmark chosen by the student, and they will share with you why they chose this North American landmark. Their presentation is behind you, and I also believe it's been shared with you in your email. The presentation will be shared with you. Post haste. So I'd like to present Quinn Murphy to speak to us about the North American landmark of particular importance.
It's right behind her, right behind Ms. Shiller and
I dedicate the American landmark that I chose because I can remember that war of war. For our identity, we're not the Rock, the Guadi, the San Ants, or Wahoo. This is how we ship the world by making them easy target. December 7th, 1941, at 7:42, Dr. Mason's plan to attack Pearl Harbor. Pearl Harbor, unprepared for the attack, by our team, we're not making them easy target. Yes, December 7th, 1941, which they will live in infinity, we rise straight to react at will. Suddenly, and deliberately attacked by Navy air and air force of the Empire of Japan. President Dave Roosevelt. This landmark is famous because it got wrecked at the 1242. At Pearl Harbor, there's a museum over the Arizona. The white building is US Air Zone, more if floating over the intersection of the ship. This is how the bomber turned around, making them easy target. This is a gun from the US Air Zone. There is still a lieutenant's jacket aiming in a closet in the US Air Zone. This video is fantastic because it shows you the inside of the ship and how it's a very burning, nobody can dominate anymore. In the US Air Zone, 1,100, 1,100, so we share with the ground eye in the attack. This is after the, this is the ruins of the ship from the attack. Pearl Harbor, then. December 7th, and it reminds us of Pearl Harbor. This is inside of the museum. These are the names of the people who died in the attack. This is the museum at High and Indian Area Studios.
Thank you very much, Quinn. Are you taking any questions or comments this evening? Let me see if I can get some for you. Hold on. Any questions or comments for Quinn? Yes, Ms. Fidlin?
Quinn, what made you interested in this particular project?
Because I was curious about the war too, and how it was made out of its remains and stuff.
Ms. Schenler?
Do you know any veterans in your life?
Yes.
Who are you?
My uncle, my aunt, or my cousin.
Ms. Shorff?
Thank you so much. I enjoyed it. My question is, if you have more time, what would you like to do or learn more?
I would like to learn about World War I.
Filter, please say filter. Mr. Victor?
Quinn, I just want to say I'm a big World War II, you know, I got served a term in the war too. And you could possibly present a presentation like that. And not only compared it to presented, but the way you were presenting. So thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming, school board. Thank you for being here. That's a small snippet of some of the North American landmark work that is done in our school. We're ready to share it with you. And get that filter, people, let's go.
Oh, here we go. Thank you so much, Quinn, for your presentation, and Spel Morrissey for having her present to us today. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is acceptance of minutes. Our first seven minutes is from August 27, 2025, our special school meeting that we scheduled. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Moved by Dr. Beth, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion or edits? Seeing none, can't be called a role. Is there any please?
Kayla? Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Me?
Tom, stay in the room.
Tom?
Yes.
Rudy?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero with two extensions because they were absent. Next set of meeting minutes is our regular scheduled school board meeting of September 8th. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented?
I'm a little
Second.
Motion by Tom Vicford, seconded by Dr. Beth. Is there any edits or discussion? Seeing none, can't be called a role, please.
Kirsten?
No, you are absent. You can still vote for them, but
Kayla?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Rudy?
Aye. And next is our meeting minutes from September 15th, 2025, the academic affairs meeting, as I should say. I don't have those in my habit. Although in the oxide, oh, I see. Sorry, Miss, uh, thank you, Dr. Beth. Those in attendance were Tom Vicford, Dr. Beth Schenler, Mary Shorff, and Danielle Van Dusen, who attended virtually. So I have a motion of those who are present to accept the meeting minutes as presented. Moved by Dr. Beth, seconded by Mary Shorff. Any members have any edits or comments? Seeing none, can't be called a role, those who are present at the meeting.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Motion passes for nothing. Meeting minutes are accepted. And we have our manifest approval for tonight. And tonight's manifest is in a total of $5,886,151.80. Is there a motion to accept the manifest as presented?
So moved by Dr. Jim.
Is there a second? Seconded by Kayla. Is there any discussion or comments on manifest? Seeing none, can't be called a role, please.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Rudy?
Aye. That concludes our acceptance of minutes. Next is public input, a total of 15 minutes, three minutes per individual, and it's extended by vote of the board. We ask everyone to be respectful. Don't cross chat or direct any comments at members of, other members of the public. Please direct your comments to the board. And the floor is for the public. You can go right into the podium there and utilize the mic. Thank you. You can state your name and time, listen to this for the record, please.
Eric Wolfborough, Hampshire. Good evening, members of the board. As you know, I spoke at the September meeting to raise concerns about the superintendent's leadership. Since then, I've been fortunate to meet with a couple of board members, and I want to thank them for their willingness to listen. It shows me that some of those are turning on the issues I raised. October marks budget season in the district. When principals and staff submit what I call the wishful thinking budget to the SAA for review, during my nine years as the athletic director, I organized and managed the athletic department's budget, hundreds of thousands of dollars annually by working with coaches and their department to plan for upcoming needs. Once this was submitted, we typically received feedback in late October by our building principals, which gave me a clear picture of what would be moving forward to the votership. When our superintendent arrived, I saw a troubling shift as it related to not just what happened to what was basically very predictable and clean budget across us, but also the management of the budget became a concern for me. Here's an example. In the spring of 2023, tens of thousands of dollars disappeared from the athletic budget. I'm going to repeat that case. If you didn't hear me, or you're going to double take, tens of thousands of dollars went missing from the athletic budget. One day, the funds were there, and perhaps they were gone. I reported this immediately to the business office and later to the high school principal, but weeks and months passed with no explanation. This was concerning not just as an employee who was responsible for all those dollars, but also as a taxpayer. Finally, at the 2023 summer admin retreat, when the issue was raised again, the superintendent's reported response was not concerned about the missing money. It was that I was bold for even asking the question and questioning the integrity of the business administrator, superintendent, and the SAA. To this day, I still have no idea what happened that month. Does this sound like fiscal accountability or fiscal mismanagement? Another example, in the fall of 2024, the superintendent attempted to cut the athletic budget by shifting uniform costs onto the teams themselves. The plan was for teams to purchase uniforms that had fundraising accounts rather than having a district budget and provide them as had been done every year prior to Caroline's arrival. This proposal was first mentioned to me by the superintendent during the meeting in the spring of 2022. It was presented as a predetermined course of action without prior discussion or collaboration with the athletic director regarding uniforms. When I inquired further, she stated that this was a practice she had observed in the door. But finally, in that meeting, I called the athletic director to inquire, and I worked the uniforms were managed on a rotation system and funded through the athletic budget consistent with our own approach. So how should the board interpret this? Was the superintendent simply being dismissive of a proven process or being dishonest by misrepresenting practices elsewhere? I'll let you all reach your own conclusions. Fortunately, the uniform proposal was challenged and brought to Chairman Boucher's attention and has since been reversed. However, Caroline's original plan has now been replaced with another complicated uniform rotation, which still amounts a cut to our kids in the athletic department. Even though it's not a complete dismantling, there are now cuts happening with the uniform rotation. I encourage the board to take a closer look at the current plan and decide whether it truly improves on a system that has worked for decades or if it was simply a way to cut from the focus. These two examples should make clear that ongoing concerns that a growing number of stakeholders and constituents have related to the superintendent's inability to lead corroboratively, and these examples should also showcase her inability to provide sound capable leadership. I have several other examples I could share tonight, but I realize on the past, my three minutes, unless the board wishes to extend their time, I won't take away from others who are here today. Thank you.
I would like to extend it up.
That's a motion. I don't read. Can I make a motion to extend his time, Tom? He's going for a good five minutes, but feel free.
May I extend, um, surround his time for three minutes, three to five minutes?
Is there a second? Seeing no second, motion fails. Is there anybody else who would like to get public input tonight? Yeah, he's free to speak again on the second round, Dr. Beth.
Thank you, Tom.
Seeing none, most public input, and we move to these two representatives of the board. So, um, perfect.
Good evening, everyone. So today was the first day of spirit week for homecoming, where the theme was salad dressing. Seniors were assigned Caesar with Greek attire, juniors range, sophomores polite, and freshmen with Solentre line. After today, the spirit days are as follows. Denim Day, breast cancer rings day, Mathletes versus Athletes, and class comm begin on Friday. There seem to be plenty of student participation today, and hopefully it will continue. Students have the fact that they have done a good job of adjusting to the new grading and scheduling platform with tasks being scheduled as normal. The cell phone ban has also continued to prove effective with there being very few infractions to spice in backup from students. Last Friday after school, the student council decorated the lunchroom with balloons and a big poster in celebration of homecoming. Tickets have began to sell at lunch for $10, and they erupted. This past Thursday and Friday, the club fair was held, where tables were set up to introduce students to the variety of different clubs that we offer. This Wednesday, the college fair will be held, where 27 different colleges will be there for students to look into. And now I'd like to introduce a video that I believe Dr. Eric Halian has that will provide some further updates.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us. I'm Caroline Eric Halian, superintendent for Governor Wyngworth Regional School District, which serves Brookfield, Effingham, New Durham, Osiphe, Tufton Borough, and Wolfborough. I'm here at the WCTV studio in Kingswood Regional High School with my special guest, senior Bryce Sandlin. Bryce is the new school board representative for Governor Wyngworth Regional School District. Welcome, Bryce. Thank you for joining me today. Before we get started with district and high school updates, can you share some past and present memories or shout outs to some of your favorite teachers?
Yeah, of course. First of all, I'd like to shout out Ms. Edison, my kindergarten teacher, for the chocolate fountain that she brought in. And also shout out Mr. Abraham for always making class enjoyable. And parent teacher, definitely shout out Ms. DeCarmo for teaching me everything I needed now.
Fantastic. We have so many incredible teachers, from your kindergarten class at Carpenter to the high school. It's always a great time to shout out teachers and remember all the way back to kindergarten to present day, senior year. So thank you for that. So sharing some updates from around the district. We're embarking upon a construction project at Carpenter School. We're very excited to announce that we'll be starting that project in the month of October. And we just want to celebrate Carpenter exactly 100 years old. So happy birthday to Carpenter School. Teachers are starting their negotiations for their contract. Teachers hope for a new contract as of July 1st. Our school board meetings are well underway. We encourage the community to join us. We're at a different town every month. We were at the arts center here in Wolfborough in September. We'll be in Effingham on Monday, October 6th, Osiphe in November, and then New Durham in December. So we hope you can join us. I'd like to turn it over to Bryce to share some updates from the high school in LRTC.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. So for some updates around the school, this past month, student council went on a team bonding trip to downtown Wolfborough where we competed in the scavenger hunt and began planning for homecoming week, which will begin next Monday, October 6th. Every day, there will be a theme for students to participate in by dressing up. Thursday night will be the hallway decorating for each class, where each class has a different theme that they would decorate according to, and judging will be the following morning. The pep rally and homecoming football game will also be on Friday, the 10th, where the football team will play Pembroke after starting up the season 2-2. Following that will be the homecoming dance on Saturday night to round off the week. In other recent athletic news, the boys soccer team is now 4-2 and 3 after picking up recent wins over John Stark and Cannon. They play Co Brown at home today. Girls soccer have had their struggles, unable to pick up a win so far. However, they play away today at Co Brown as well. The golf team are hosting their senior night tonight, where they'll be hosting Tahican, Cops Town, and Winneconan. Girls field hockey is now 5-4 after winning 2-1 against Muggins yesterday, and they will face John Stark tonight away. Girls volleyball are having a great start so far with a 7-2 record and sweeps in all their victories. They lost a close 2-3 game to Summersworth yesterday, but will face Gailford next on Saturday. Looking ahead, DECA has their fall leadership conference on October 2nd at UNH, and FPLA will have theirs on October 28th, also at UNH. Finally, Kingswood Theater will be producing Cinderella from November 21st to the 23rd. And I'd just like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to be the voice for the student body, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for those updates. Certainly many activities going on around campus and the district. Thank you for joining us today, and we hope you can join us next time.
Oh, no, not like that, though. Oh, here goes. Thank you. Thank you, Spel Morrissey. Thank you, Bryce, for your update. Thank you, Dr. Eric Halian, for sharing that video with Bryce and saving our community. Next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Eric Halian to provide her superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Bryce, for joining me in that video, that district update. We hope to provide more for the community as the year rolls on. Thank you to WCTV for hosting us and providing state-of-the-art equipment and studio space at the high school to help us with our communication to the community. So I've provided some information to the board. We have provided a snapshot of the required enrollment report as of October 1st. For the board, we have solid numbers across the district. A couple of schools have increased. Effingham has increased with 125 students and counting. Also, I've shared the winter weather procedures with all families. Shared that as of the end of last week. And as always, the snow days, the closures for inclement weather are traditional snow days in this district. So no blizzard bags, no remote learning, traditional snow days. And we have a very large district geographically. So as always, you know, it's a parent's prerogative. It's always your decision to decide if coming to school is safe or not, depending on the roads. So if and when we keep school open and a family decides to keep their child or children home due to weather, there's no count against that in our offices, and we'll provide the work for you. So that winter weather hopefully is not for a while. It was pretty nice out today, but this is around the time of year we send that out. I want to share with the board, you may recall the state's budget law included a provision requiring superintendents to sign a certification related to diversity, equity, inclusion. The certification would require individuals to affirm that they do not teach or advocate certain EI curriculum or divisive concepts as defined in the law. However, there were two temporary restraining orders on that requirement. And as of just a few days ago, preliminary injunction was granted. A judge determined that anti-DEI laws are unconstitutional and that schools, it's too vague, and schools would not know how to uphold that law. So that is an update regarding that certification. As far as strategic plan update, increasing coffee and conversations with the superintendent, as we viewed earlier with WCTV, and hosting in-person sessions prior to board meetings in communities. I held one today with Effingham, Effingham parent and staff, and it was a great conversation. So look for that in the town near you. Finally, in updates, it's actually the next item on the agenda, but also on my report, is the Carpenter School update. So as you heard me announce on the video, we're very happy with the progress. We've secured the Bounding Corporation to serve as project manager. Over the past two weeks, subcontractors have been walking the site through the building to review the scope of work, prepare the estimates. This phase is nearly complete, and they'll be meeting with us tomorrow to discuss specifics. Our teachers have settled into modular classrooms. We're still making modifications to increase the comfort level and to make sure that their, you know, their safety regulations are all compliant. And as always, remain deeply grateful to the staff for their flexibility and to the parents. We've had successful meet and greets and open house nights. So thank you to everyone who works together to just use a part of the school building at this point. So thank you. Keep going. Thank you very much. I did touch on I did touch on the winter weather. That is an agenda item in this report, and that's an important message that was sent out to families last week. And then the next item is the budget timeline. Just gonna flip to that page. Every year, we meet with our administrators. So, the business administrator and I meet with all of the administrators. This will be happening October 14th, 15th, and 17th. So, all the principals and SAU administrators to hear their budgets from their buildings. So, that'll be happening that week. And then the finance committee, the school board finance committee, will be meeting three evenings. That's their usual process. November 18th, 19th, and 20th. That's at 6:00 PM at Crescent Lake. So, that's when the administrators present to the finance committee. And that committee, at the end of those sessions, move to send the proposed budget to the full board at the next board meeting, which will be on December 8th, and that one will be in New Durham. Then after that, January 5th is the final adoption hearing. January 13th is the last date for collective bargaining, of which teachers are bargaining at this time. January 13th is also the last date for petition warrant articles. The 20th is the last date to post notice of a bond hearing. And the 26th is the last date to post warrant budget and the default budget. Filing dates for school district officers are January 21st through 30th. We have four members who are up for three-year terms in 2026. We have Dr. Jim Mannan, the Brookfield seat. Tom Bigford, Member-at-Large. Kayla Hewitt, Wolfborough member, and Kirstenburg Tufton Borough member. Our deliberative session will be Saturday, January 31st at 10:00 AM. And voting will be Tuesday, March 10th, 2026. The last item on the superintendent's report does require an action. So, this is a crowdfunding request for Governor Wyngworth Regional School District's School Board Policy DFPA. So, when there's a fundraiser and the fundraisers wish to use a crowdfunding online platform for this policy, they must submit an application. This is a fundraiser that we hold near and dear to our hearts. Jennifer Miranda Carlo, social studies teacher at KRHS, holds the annual James Foley... Freedom Month, thank you. The fundraiser goes towards the James W. Foley Legacy Foundation. So, there is information in the packets. This campaign will begin tomorrow, but it will not begin the date that is on the page here. It will, pending board approval. And then it will go through the event, which is October 18th.
Is there a motion to accept the crowdfunding proposal from Mrs. Mary Carlo as presented, moved by Mary?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tom Bigford. Is there any discussion? It's a pretty long, regular event that we approve. You don't have any comments? No comments?
Okay.
Seeing no comments, then Captain, call the roll once you're ready, please.
Kristen? Yes. Kayla? Yes. Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ruby?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Nothing? Do you have anything else about Ericallian? Okay, so, the crowdfunding request is approved, and the superintendent's report is done. Next, we move on to the chair.
Just, yeah, I have these numbers online now that Eric alluded to.
Did you have any? Yeah, we can both keep them online.
Can we get the breakdown by the high school, too, as well? I know it would be a question for...
Of town, the town where you're at.
Of town, I guess.
Thank you for answering. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Thanks. Seeing no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the chair's report. So, first is correspondence. The district sent expressions of sympathy to the family of former school board member Ernie Brown, who served with the Governor Wyngworth Regional School District School Board from 1988 to 2019. And he was extremely instrumental in the Kingswood complex renovation and project. I've met Ernie personally a few times, but I think Dr. Jim can do a lot more justice to make some comments on Ernie and the services provided to our district.
Am I not there yet? Protagonize a little bit my speech, because I was gonna say, a lot of people don't know who Ernie Brown was. But I would like to say this about Ernie. He's probably in a project in the state, in the district, that he had some figure in. I'll tell you this, he rebuilt, he had the concrete, he had the steps on a copper mason's floor. He took the cowl off and then, he did a little solo project in that game. And he was instrumental during the government of the high school, LRTC, the middle school, and the outset. Without him, I don't think we would have what we have, facilities. Or I'll think that people don't really know his... He never really turned up strong, talked about things. He was quick. Got to this point, and everyone is done. I'd like to say thank you to him. I suppose it was a kind of parade, but he had a little failure, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ken, for your comments. Next on my report is election law updates. So, last meeting added to my report, we had some inquiries from some of the moderators, the town moderators in our district about a new bill that became law, House Bill 154. And since then, the Secretary of State's Office and the Attorney General's Office have published a joint memo. In your packets, you'll see a specific page for House Bill 154, where they provided a summary and some Qs and As. And the Secretary of State's Office and New Hampshire Attorney General's Office is now recommending that if folks who are in, you know, voting in towns that doesn't have the ballot counter device, but would like their ballot hand counted, that the election officials in that municipality who are running the election will make sure the ballots are segmented and that they're hand counted at the central location at the end of the poll. So, while it's not truly an auxiliary box on a ballot counter device for the purposes of being able to actually fulfill the requirement in the law, that's what the Secretary of State's Office and Attorney General's Office has commented. Our school district clerk and moderator have received this information, and will encourage them to share that with the election officials in each of our municipalities, especially those that don't have the ballot counter device. So, is there any questions or comments that folks have? Seeing none, we can move on to the next item. Next is letter to state legislators over the Bell-to-Bell cellphone ban. At our Brookfield town meeting, we had a pretty deep discussion about the Bell-to-Bell cellphone ban. And some board members felt that it was fairly expansive in how my people dealt and its limitations on students being allowed cellphones on their person to utilize them outside of instructional time. We had some discussion at our September board meeting that after a week of school, it did not seem like there was a lot of, you know, folks concerned or upset in our school district. But because we had such a small amount of time, I sampled across the board. I believe it on the agenda until our October meeting. I still have yet to have a single parent contact me about their concerns with the Bell-to-Bell cellphone ban. And Bryce mentioned in his student report, and when we asked him at the September meeting about the Bell-to-Bell ban, said that students actually found it to be beneficial and encouraged them to make more social connections. So, I love the personal opinion. I don't think there really more to the letter at this point. I think we were, you know, clearly saw a lot of concerns. I've heard from some people maybe over the summer, but things have worked out possibly better than we anticipated. But willing, if some of them likes, make a motion to send a letter or have further discussion to see if folks do a different thing.
Well, you want to remember discussion?
Done. Okay, so, Tom made a motion to send the letter?
No, just for discussion. Yeah, I actually just wanted to ask Bryce, who gave us the update, just to see if they want to change it at all.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's still been, like, really effective. Like, it's still been, like I said, there was, like, very few interactions and, like, a lot of...
I'm sorry, Bryce, could you use the microphone?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think there's still been very few interactions.
I think it is, yeah. Yeah, so, there's still been very few interactions, and a lot of teachers have, like, mentioned that we've been really good about it. And especially, I was saying, like, at lunch, it's, like, nice to just walk around and not have everyone staring down their phones. But it is, like, obviously hard to go, like, six hours without your phone. So, that's not great, but, like, overall, I think it has been beneficial. But the previous rules that we had at school where it was, like, you got punished if you had the phone during instructional time. I think personally that was better, but this has also proved to be very productive, so, yeah.
Appreciate your perspective, Bryce. So, anyone else have any comments or discussion? I mean, I still question whether or not the state should be involved in this type of local decision-making, but, you know, many times I have Pandora's box, it's often open on many issues in the state. You know, we have to take it in the business of local government or local district administration of government. So, it seems in this situation, it hasn't had as negative of an impact as maybe other things that have happened in the past with the state. You know, overruling local decision-making. So, I'm not too inclined to ask our legislators to take any level of action. Also pointed out, our letter was originally drafted in a way to ask our legislators to consider drafting legislation, and that appeared as, well, we bypassed it here. So, if there is a bill, there will be some bill out there, I assume. But, you know, there's nothing that we require our legislators to do other than to know our position, and I don't know if we have any other position at this point. Any other comments? Seeing none, I think I can spare me the next agenda item. Okay, we've got a very quiet board, and we've heard folks have a lot of thoughts on a lot of things, so... Next is our NHSBA annual convention update. So, the idea was I would be able to report to you guys what happened at the annual convention. If you read your email, you'll probably have seen that they delayed the annual convention until September 25th. So, if you're available, sorry, October 25th. I lost September in the busyness of everything. October 25th, so, if anyone's interested in attending on October 25th, they'll get there around 9:30-ish. They have a big breakfast buffet. It's really interesting to be involved in the governance of the NHSBA. And we had, you know, solicited initial feedback on the resolutions that are currently proposed, continuing ones and new ones. And, you know, we're seeing the board reports feedback. And if folks want to provide additional feedback or if they change their mind, feel free to contact me about that. So, is there any questions or discussion on the annual conference?
This was the Bell-to-Bell.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Bell, yes, that's exactly.
That's the Bell-to-Bell.
Oh, what was that, Tom?
This, you're talking about the Bell-to-Bell.
Yes, the Bell-to-Bell.
I can't remember if I've talked about it or if you do or anybody else.
Yeah, yeah. No, more than I have to talk about it. Well, if anyone wants to join Tom on our front page. All right. Is there any other discussion? I really encourage you, if you can, to try to attend. It is really, yes, fair?
I do expect to attend.
You are, really?
I'm glad of me.
Yeah, I don't want to...
I dented my car with all the equipment that go to WCTV, but other than that, Wolfborough, how do you people call it?
Rochambeau. Okay, so, we'll, Tom, Mary, and I will board in on the 25th. We'll move on to prepared statement on behalf of the board regarding School Care. So, I imagine it probably publishes online after. I just have one correction to it. I'll apply that before and after a forgotten word. But, "Dear Governor Wyngworth community, On September 23rd, the Governor Wyngworth Regional School District received correspondence from School Care informing us that School Care has a projected $4.5 million deficit to close their district, which ended on June 30th, 2025. School Care is a governmental risk management program, also known as a risk pool to which our school district, other school districts, towns, cities, and other public or governmental entities are members. School Care manages a risk pool that purchases health insurance and submits claims on behalf of its members and their employees. When School Care announced its projected $4.5 million deficit and ongoing financial issues related to health insurance claims and pharmacy costs, which continue to outpace their estimates, they also informed Governor Wyngworth and other members that they would be issuing a $30 million prograder contribution assessment to all member entities who are members as of June 30th, 2025. School Care told members that this action will restore its reserves to a level of 12% of member contributions. For most members, this assessment will roughly equal one and a half months of contributions. Governor Wyngworth received a bill or assessment a week later, on October 1st, for $1,642,316.20. School Care has requested payment upon receipt, but has provided all members with a 90-day grace period. After January 1, 2026, School Care will charge members 0.5% interest monthly for any unpaid balances. The school board met with legal counsel on October 1st and had further legal discussions during our public session tonight. We are also receiving ongoing legal guidance as more information becomes available and the situation develops. Additionally, the superintendent has spoken with superintendents in other school districts, and I, as the board chair, have communicated with the New Hampshire School Boards Association's executive director and legal counsel. At this juncture, the board has not yet received sufficient legal justification from School Care that it has the legal authority to assess its members or that members are contractually or legally obligated to pay an assessment issued by School Care. The board has instructed its legal counsel to request additional justification from School Care regarding its recent actions and to request other relevant information for the board and council to review. In the coming weeks, the board will determine if it is legally or contractually obligated to pay School Care's assessment. The school board has requested that the superintendent and administrators begin making plans for how Governor Wyngworth would pay for this assessment in the case that it's legally or contractually required or if the board deems it necessary in the best interest of the school district. The school board will ensure that any plan has the least impact on students and existing services, considers ongoing fiscal constraints, and is thoughtful of taxpayers. We will also ensure that the New Hampshire Department of the Administration and the State Education Department are consulting. If the school board does decide to pay, it will approve a plan at a future school board meeting, likely our regularly scheduled meeting in November, December. The entire situation has further encouraged the already ongoing strong consideration of exploring other health insurance options. In the coming months, the board plans to reach out to all three of you means to initiate discussions about potential approaches. This will be an initial collaborative exploration aimed at identifying what may best serve the district, its employees, and taxpayers. If anyone has any questions about this ongoing legal matter, please do not hesitate to contact me, the board chair, and/or the superintendent, respectfully submitted by me, as the governor of Wyngworth Regional School Board Chair, Member-at-Large. And the one word I forgot was in the third paragraph, last sentence, 0.5% interest monthly. This statement will be included in our meeting minutes. And I don't know if we want to share publicly some other... some other way if there wasn't a huge attendance at Effingham tonight to hear the statement. It's a pretty pretty important one though. So we'll post it on the website too and um I think you know I mentioned this during our night HR report but um the board did tonight empower the HR committee to engage all three um bargaining units collective bargaining units in our school district to um begin the process of exploration of um insurance options as we are going to decide to go a different route um when the next fiscal year begins and what that will look like you know we'll be in a collaborative process for that. Do you have a comment Tom?
I just wanted some chance to put in to the weekly um newspapers that search the way for our district.
Um, we have the Austin Independent, the um, it's a brand state but also the Baysider that starts in Durham, can't forget Durham. I never would um so I can if the board would like I would be more than happy I haven't submitted something in the newspaper if he wants to pick you know Brendan Brendan Brew he might be missing it um so I can do that and I don't know if the Conventy Sun would submit it but um I think the three locals will be more insufficient to weeklys um so we'll put it on the website and it shares the meeting minutes obviously with the correction on monthly added and I will unsubmit um and I'll make sure it's clear that this is a statement that I made but on behalf of the board based on our discussions. Does that sound good to everyone? Okay, um is there any other I mean there's not really much to comment on this ongoing legal matter but if anyone else have any questions or suggestions? Seeing none, that concludes my chairman's report. And we will move on to committee reports and first well I'll hand it over to Dr. Duschecker for the academic affairs report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, before I start in on policies tonight I just will let the community know that um we've received a number of messages from constituents um recently relating to a block of three policies that they would particularly like to have us review and so the academic affairs committee will be looking at policies GBD, GPK and BCA um October twenty second? Yes, October twenty second um special meeting and we also have some updates to cover um some updates from summer work that was done with the new curriculum director um and so that's happening. For our policies today these are presented to you for first read which means that if we advance them they will go through second read for adoption at our next board meeting since it's not your final opportunity to make a comment but uh we will take them in three blocks one for recommendation for adoption one for revision and then for withdrawal um and we will have discussion for each block. So we'll begin with the recommended policies for adoption again at first read they are BDBE vacancies in unexpired term. This is a new policy for our district and policy IKFC which is alternate diploma for students with significant cognitive disabilities. Is there any um do I have a motion to advance these policies?
To the first read.
Oh, to second read. We advanced them to second read, we don't we don't have a motion? Okay, is there any discussion on these policies?
I have some.
Yeah, I know that you did.
We have, I asked them to say.
Well, you're not the only one that had issues with these two so.
Okay, great.
Tom?
There were some inconsistencies with the policy that's presented to us as compared to the.
Which policy are you saying Tom just so I can. Oh, that one, okay.
Well, this is work. Uh, they, um, there are just some discrepancies that we could clean up um between the New Hampshire School Board Association um sample and we're looking to adopt.
Go over those. Well, I'm sorry to ask but they could be the same as I have although I think mine are. Um, you mind if I make my comment?
Oh, absolutely.
My so my only concern is one is optional so it's basically telling it's a policy that nears the statute for how we fill vacancies for school board members on cooperative school districts. My concern is under section B where it says vacancy on school board while that is the language in RSAA six seventy one colon thirty three thrown into subsection B it's confusing because it's not written necessarily for school districts like ours where everyone's elected at large. So when I've spoken to NHSBA about this statute and we've had openings technically because we're all elected at large and we all represent all six towns every board member gets to be a part of the process of voting to fill the empty the vacancy of the seat. So if I was a member of the public and I read this this paragraph here um I would probably make other assumptions based on how it might make sense for other cooperative school districts um but that wouldn't be a correct legal interpretation and it might be confusing by us following our legal counsel and NHSBA's guidance so I I believe that while um this is an accurate statement legally it should really reflect that what our process looks like locally which is we all are involved because we are all at large members and we are voting to fill an at-large seat albeit designated for a resident from a specific town or if it's an at-large seat anyone who's a resident throughout the district so that's my comment I think that will enumerating this paragraph in our policies will create more confusion not alleviate which was the goal adopted as optional policy.
My concerns are probably a little more technical than mine. Going to the one thing that needs to be corrected is numbering of paragraphs um starting with vacancy on school board should be number one. And moving on from there to three um and replace the language and all the errors in two is number one now vacancy under moderator and use school association language in that. And those sort of things that I'll be taking a look at.
Wait, so you're saying that the vacancy other than moderator doesn't align with what NHSBA's sample policy says?
Correct.
And what what doesn't align I'm just curious I mean I could look myself a while around here might be beneficial for us all to hear.
The um, the New Hampshire School Association language is being that needs to be in the office in the office other than the school board or moderator and then goes on the entire school board shall fill vacancies occurring in other district offices except that of moderator until the next annual meeting for the district and then it cites RSAA six seventy one colon thirty three thrown into two and RSAA one ninety seven colon twenty six and in ours it was map number number two number one will be number two um it reads the school board will shall fill a vacancy occurring on the board in any position fairly appointed by the board or in any other elected district office with the exception of moderator if remaining members refuse or are unable to agree on a placement or in the event there are no remaining school board members and the moderator may make the appointment and then it goes on to section RSAA six seventy one colon thirty three and RSAA one ninety seven twenty cents.
Okay, so I think we need that to be correct from asking this NHSBA language.
Yeah.
I think what I'm hearing out of my the right side of my ear here for some of our administrators is that they utilize the statutory language for non-cooperative school districts versus cooperative they copy basically the wrong sample policy from NHSBA so they can they can copy the accurate paragraph for cooperative school districts because the employment process is different so.
Could we could we look at this again on number two in that?
So we'll just refer this back together?
I think it can be advanced and we'll be ready for you all on September four for Mexico is that acceptable? I think we can move it to second read and just. Yeah, I thought this began, I thought. My my concern with this policy is after reading it again I agree with Brody about how confusing that first paragraph is and if the administration would like to draft a revision that would be excellent okay that's great. Because I think it's a cost problem and it's not solved at this point. Great. And any other discussion related to the policies that are put forward for adoption at this time? Hearing none, I'm gonna move on to the block for revision. Does anyone need to read all of the names and letters of them is that good for the WCTV? All right, there you go.
I meant nothing other way around.
Okay, please read a meeting in general before this the policies of for revision tonight which I will not be needing to read at all sometimes. Any discussion on these policies?
I have a comment. My comment is I I'd be.
There it is. Okay, this policy's existed for a long time. My concern is I think these class sizes especially for the K through two um I think it's too large. And based on feedback we got from administrators and the amount of work it takes to care for little human beings that range from age four to seven um I think it would be quite difficult to have a teacher with twenty students that need help wiping their nose need help finding the bathroom need help washing their hands need help tying their shoes need help with just about every single thing you can be meaning help with. So that that's my I also in some of the other parts of it like even twenty you know I can see twenty five for three through six but even I think it's a little bit aggressive as it takes for the older levels you know twenty five for high school middle school that I can reasonably see because middle school or high school can wash themselves in the bathroom and type of shit but I think six and less um I don't know my personal opinion is especially for the kindergarten through secondary our numbers should be a little bit less than twenty um as a goal obviously you know it says whenever possible but I think our goal should be having you know a little bit lower ratio for younger students based on the developmental abilities. That's that's my personal.
So any other comments that would be a change from our previous thresholds which were twenty twenty five?
I don't know if this included in this I haven't read it like minutes ago but we need to take into consideration who's in that classroom. And I as an educator have as many as thirty two fifth graders. That's like an army in front of you considering the little kids that know there's other students in there whose developmental whatever they're not all opposed to mistakes just exactly like so I would welcome the lowering of that I think this will not give our grade two teacher the open applause that they build it after her students so safety issues as well.
And Carolyn, just to clarify that's these thresholds are set currently to mirror what New Hampshire law is for the maximums and what our practice has been for the district.
Yes, so currently it says kindergarten through grade two maximum class size is limited to twenty five students per educator however the policy of the school board the class sizes for kindergarten through two should whenever possible be limited to twenty so yes the law is twenty five and we strive for twenty students or less per educator as the capacity for the school district and then grades three through six is twenty five um and thirty and that's the same for middle high school. I would um so certainly I think um you know we certainly appreciate this consideration from the board as far as you know keeping class sizes manageable and um of course as Mira said it depends on many factors you know sometimes students require support sometimes students don't and so sometimes a class of twelve feels like twenty or a class of twenty five may feel like twelve so there are there are other factors we've been operating around these numbers uh for a while and uh twenty can feel large um I would caution the board to go too low considering um we um would then have to come to the boards when we hire in teachers at you know if we reach a certain point with you know a couple of schools like Effingham where we have one teacher per grade level and that's not a bad thing necessarily or Tuckton Borough um or some grade levels in Durham so um it's just that's an important consideration. Um, on the other side of things I'm noticing now this one statement uh the superintendent must include all classes October four and will submit said list. I would you know upon further reflection um request that that add back in.
That was my other comment too is that that's been a very longstanding um aspect of this policy for our school district is for classes of twelve or fewer I would not specific to like high school and middle school classes and make sure that we're not setting too low of a class size ratios at the upper levels for very specific electives um or AP courses so um I'd even trying to field classes that are like significantly really small number of students is a need cost issue.
So um what I'm hearing is caution from the institution related to um limiting the class size if you look at the census you know we would be required to split actually quite a few of our classes if we were to go under twenty at this point um so that's just something to think about if are we we would suggest revisions tonight and then and then go ahead and do them okay I'm comfortable with adding back in the previous language that was struck related to the the minimum class size if others are.
I.
Yes. Uh, I think we would do that would we include like if we're in a cover. You can do it, sorry. Okay, so you guys would do that thing for that quick.
Um, I don't I want to make a comment. I think it's very timely about the enrollment data because I'm I'm looking at the enrollment data and I think even if we decrease some of our class sizes especially if you look at the K through third um unless we started to decrease them to ten students per teacher I think we would still be safe my my concern is in you know because I'm looking at it and so. My con, my concern is in, you know, because I'm looking at it and it's like. No, no, even if we did eighteen, it says, the way I interpret the policy is it says whenever possible. Man, you know, if you have twenty students and your goal is eighteen, you're like, well, it's not really possible because ten is just too, it's too small. That's just not physically reasonable. But if you had thirty and your policy is eighteen, you might say, well, we need to have two classes of about fifteen. Um, I think we would do that anyways. Just my conjecture, so I don't know. Again, you know, I might not change anything updating the language to what I think, but I do think in some of our smaller schools, sometimes you can get those numbers in some grades up to twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and that starts to be a lot, I think, on our staff members and also the ability to provide a more individualized pathway of educating them. That's just my concern, so I'll just share my personal.
Okay, go ahead. Mary, who do you think?
Mary, sorry. I'm looking back at the cheat sheet stuff, so I'm sorry.
I'm laughing.
Yeah, sure. You guys, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting a change of numbers because I think the administration, you know, to think the administration, um, is extremely diligent when it comes to the needs of individual needs of students. I just think it's worth saying, you know, that it's a concern that we're aware of. But I would suggest changing things.
Sorry. I'll stop over there. Um, I, I agree with, with Brody, you know, I, I think it's not getting easier to manage kids in, in classrooms. Just think, uh, it's a lot for somebody, especially, you know, with more, um, you know, special needs and stuff like that coming through the district. I think, uh, I don't think we should definitely increase the number. I'm happy with the twenty-five, we hold, we hold the twenty-five. And, uh, do they give any reasons why? I mean, I know this came from the administration association. Do they, you know, support this? Does that mean? Or just, did you guys, was this from the district?
We strive for twenty, but the law is twenty-five. But that was the previous policy as well, right?
It's like, uh, so there's like education rules that they adopt, move or recognize in classes in three oh six.
Three oh six.
Yeah, so the, the rules that the board, the education, state education board adopts, but we also implement, you know, smaller class size numbers because their class size numbers are absurd and don't make any sense. So, um, and that's been within our existing policy, so it's kind of like NH SBA, NH SBA policy mixed with our existing policy. Um, some of the state requires, but we'll re-strive.
Isn't there a reason that you took out the May hiring system in very over? It doesn't say it has to, but just give that option.
I agree.
Yeah, that is not reflected in the sample policy, that option. Um, there's just, there's definitely any, uh, the admin. Is there, if you hear any, you know, on that? Oh, the instructional system may be hired for that class?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, more than twenty-five students, but we wouldn't, there's a conflict there in that language because we would never go to twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
So, but, you know, we're certainly, um, open to any run into the board, but I'd like to add as far as, uh, if the class cases contains more than, you know, a different number of students, instructional system may be hired for that class based upon a review by the teacher in the school and the recommendation of the superintendent. So currently it says twenty-five students, however, we would not, um, re-strive for twenty. So if it reached twenty-five, I would be coming to the board for another teacher if that's legal. I wouldn't be coming to the board to add a very professional.
If we made that way, that number's got twenty-five, say twenty, that, you know, maybe help, you know, solving problems, right, and honestly, you know, they're not going to be a teacher, but they're being assistant and be able to help with other things.
Yes, it would.
I wouldn't be opposed to for K through six, keeping it where it says twenty. I do want to be cognizant though, then, then the, um, then I look at the enrollment. Sorry, let me try to, is this mic working? Oh.
Good one? Oh, you're red?
Yes.
Oh, I'll get you a battery.
Thank you, question. I think it's fine, I think we're gonna survive.
Okay.
Well, I'm, okay. I'm just trying to be a good egg here. Does this work? It is, huh? It has full battery. It's just, you thinking? Come on, you're done?
Can you keep talking while I did you spread battery?
That's, you know what?
Hey, we're happy, Michael, right?
Um, the mics in the school district, he, um.
I'm assuming the, 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 the.
That'll, that'll.
That's right.
Another topic for another day.
I was going to think you were raising money.
I would, I mean, I would see, actually now looking at it, there might be one Crescent Lake class where that would be the case if we did implement that language. New Durham would have two classes, Tuckton Borough would have two classes. So, and then, you know, you'd be very cuss about Effingham at two of their classes. It wouldn't be over twenty. So, I mean, we have to be cognizant, if we updated the policy that way, it might require us to hire like five to six part-time people or to have a full-time person floating between multiple classes to support, which might be, it might be worth, it might be worth doing that, but my concern would be, we've had a lot of fiscal constraints due to our default budget, we can't hang or have it, we're going to pass another budget. And especially if we're going to start right off the bat with health insurance costs we talked tonight and, you know, we're negotiating a contract, we need increased salaries, and then we're going to ask for five more positions right off the bat, I mean, you know, that might be difficult. So, you know, I'll just off myself add it, so we might be asking a little more.
If we leave it in the A, but it's about, it's about guaranteed, right?
Dr. Manning.
I agree, unless the principal or superintendent make that assessment, obviously a lot of people make that assessment because we're here, you know, but if you leave it as a pay, then give them the option rather than having to come to us every time they need a new position, it would take that option. But I'm happy with the admin and affairs committee taking this, I can, and do their, do their work.
Did you watch that?
Oh, Mary.
Mary was.
It's on, we can.
Well, that was worth it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I just noticed, actually, Mary just told me it said the day on the top of the page was twenty-four.
I think that day was incorrect, I think that, okay.
So I didn't, I didn't saw who twenty-five, okay.
All right. So do we have a census on this? Are we comfortable with a revision requested by Dr. Mary Ciumian related to the revision we have? And it doesn't sound like we are willing to change the thresholds provided here. Are we comfortable where we are? Or would someone like to stick us for revision of the numbers?
I like Mira's suggestion of paragraph number, strike for the K through twelve, so keep that in. You know? Yeah, why not?
Do you actually add that back in? Correct. Make this new language. Yes. Any objections down there? Okay. Any other discussion about policies for revision at this time?
I got it. It's a meeting.
I K E A.
Sure.
But I don't want any trademark infringement, so I'm copyrighting all of them. I just wondered maybe why, is it just the two social studies, the courses, is that just to, to follow other, so we, you know, because the other ones are two math courses, just to be more general? Because I mean, on the next page it says it's required to take, or it should be covered?
Sure.
Dr. Wilson, would you like to say?
Yes, this allows it to be a little bit more gentle to that, A, if our programs, if our progression ever changes, it allows us to let students, they don't have to necessarily have those particular two courses before the eleventh grade. And if you have transfer students coming in, it means that if they have taken a different progression, they don't have to necessarily have those particular two.
I agree.
It sounds like it's, oh, la di da.
Thank you. Okay. So any other comments on I K E N? Okay, any other comments on any other policies within the block for revision? All right?
Oh, we're seeing that we have this clerical.
Sure, please, please.
J I C.
J I C, student.
Right, and it's, it's just a standard we're adhering to instead of age appropriate, developmentally appropriate.
Where?
I'm sorry, first page after, did you quote the code of conduct? It's like a.
Oh, did you quote conduct with such?
Yeah, so when we reviewed this at the committee level, we modified all mentions of age appropriate to developmentally appropriate, so one did get missed. It's just a little bit, just a little bit, thank you for the questions. Okay, thank you. Any others? Thank you, Board, for reading the policies. Okay, moving on to the final section, there are four policies recommended for withdrawal this evening, and the administration hopefully put in notes as to why they are being withdrawn for your efforts. Any comments on any of these four? Great, so we, I don't need to take a motion, we're just going to move to second meeting, we're all set. Okay, that concludes the end of the conference report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beck. Next is the buildings and maintenance report, Dr. Manning, does everyone agree?
Yep. We beat on the night, that's all I could say.
Hey, that's my favorite report. Community relations, District Nate Williams.
Yeah, so we had a very meeting today, well, more of the, the ground table was today. We do need to get together to figure out what time for meeting, but we can get that offline. We had a really good representation from Kingham, every school in the district, for every PTO in the district. There was a lot of discussion, we almost allowed a top end on fundraising, and so, yeah, it was really good and they were open to more of them, and so I think it was a great and valuable meeting, so more to come, so thanks to the other board members that came too as well, so.
Thank you. Next is finance, as the superintendent mentioned, we will have our, our finance committee meetings and hearings coming up. I'm not a hundred percent sure of those one evening days, I would have to talk more to the administration because I will not be in town in those days, although I could come back, but I'm presenting multiple days at a conference in Manchester. So we'll see, maybe I'll just come back every evening and then go back to the conference each day, so, but, so stay tuned on those, I'll have to figure out if we can do the week before, if there's some, there's special conflicts there. Uh-oh. I know you'll present that, so I thought I'd like to say, I don't know, we don't want to meet that, hey?
Oh, no, it's not like that, we're already meet that.
Yeah, I know. And, so, stay tuned, maybe I'll just have to break it out that week. Human resources, as you heard from our statement of the school care tonight, the board has empowered the HR committee to start engaging all three of our units on, you know, exploring potential options for health insurance in the future, future fiscal years, and negotiations are ongoing with, we are, you know, the teachers, the department, and we can move on to non-committee reports. First is the Wolfboro Capital Improvements Plan Committee. Here's the floor, is it yours?
Okay. Over the past two months, the CIP committee has met weekly to review and hear presentations from multiple town departments, including fire, super, municipal, electric fund, library, public works, parks, and recreation and water. Our focus has been on identifying planning for projects scheduled over the next three years. This, this year, the committee has used a scoring process to evaluate each proposed project. Projects were scored, identified, and then results were averaged on several different criteria, including emergency or public safety needs, providing capacity to serve the current population or future growth, support for job development, alignment with the 2019 master plan goals, leveraging non-property tax revenues, availability of limited-time matching funds. Each project is ranked using this system, which allowed us to prioritize based on both need and long-term community benefit. While I didn't have an official vote on the committee, my input was included in that process, and I appreciate it being a part of those discussions. The projects currently being put forward for the next three years include the fire department, purchase of a second new ambulance, which will allow one to serve as a backup and let the department alternate them on a five-year rotation. In addition, replacements of portable radios are needed to meet equipment demands, public works, replacement of the H D seven vehicle, and planned town road upgrades, including school road, library, the parking lot drainage and improvement work, water department, treatment plant upgrades, and installation of the orchard line holes, sewer department, small pump station evaluations and work, road infrastructure, Crescent Lake Avenue complete street project. The committee has worked on prioritizing projects that strengthen public safety, address infrastructure improvements, and meet long-term community needs. I also have all of the financials and any information, if anyone wants to go through this, it is a hefty book later, but that concludes my CIP O D.
Thank you. And next we have a Wolfboro community television non-committee report from Mary.
Thank you. We could talk about the fundraising, which was going along very well, but response from the community, including matching funds and foundations, a response at the farmer's market, and the recent Fosse Field Fall Festival, which I talked about earlier, so we have, was, the presence there wasn't about fundraising, it was about awareness. I was, I was just so excited with folks that came up and said, what can we do? And somebody whose business was like Health and Public Health, so I was moving along, I have great faith that WCTV is, is growing and evolving, and at best, maybe I will have, is this morning, Trevor Phil Hoberton and the executive director Timothy Goodwin and I met with a volunteer who's recently retired, moved back to the area, but his first job was at WASR, if anybody remembers WASR, and, and, already, already, where you found out if you were going to school. So he's recently retired, has a lot of media background, he can do many, many things, but is looking forward to doing that.
Thank you, Mary. Closing activities, advanced planning, future meeting dates, so building the maintenance subcommittee meeting on October ninth, October thirteenth is no school, Columbus Day, formerly Indigenous Peoples' Day, November third is our next school board meeting at Ospey Central School. And see, please see gbrsc.org backslash calendar for the most current event details, subject to change, please contact the S U office on six zero three five six nine one six five eight, three days prior to the meeting if you require any modifications and or surrender meaning to access this meeting. And we'll close with our final public input, so fifteen minutes, three minutes per individual, most extended by vote of four, and, oh, oh, I mean, there's not a lot of people to direct your comments at, so please be respectful and please direct it to the chair, thank you.
It is difficult, having not attended the academic fair subcommittee meetings, to follow along with the discussion about policy amendment redaction, read, first read, second read, withdrawal, to follow along with that and not have it in front of us. However, I think this evening, I got the sense that the board would be highly aware of class size and student need and the demands that students are coming to school with, and I think somewhere in the discussion, there was also a recognition of the flexibility that is needed to address the needs that come to school, so for that, I'd like to say thank you.
Here, might as well.
Yeah, let him run, oh, he could just be.
Carrie Drew, I'm the Ospey resident.
There you go, that was Patty Morrison, useful for the record.
My question is about the, the school care issue that we're going to face. How, how many other entities are within school care that would be sharing that over this evening or not?
It's about, what is it, sixty-nine?
It's only we can hire about ninety, and it's all of them, it's big.
Yeah, it's about, it's about ninety political subdivisions of the state, so it could be libraries, it could be towns, cities, school districts, housing authorities, and whoever joins as a member, they're paying pro rate, they, they've been asked to pay a pro rate contribution by the assessment.
And how would that affect the members of school care as a part? Like a personal, as a personal application to school care?
Yeah, you're talking about an employee who the member gets insurance for. We've had ongoing legal discussions, so I'm not going to, you know, breach or to any client privilege, but I can, I think there'll be forthcoming communications on that in the future, but currently, you know, we've had discussions with, with some of the union leaders about that and that topic and are currently in interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
Good, all right, well, seeing no further public input, request of motion to the chair at, what is it? Really? Eight thirty-seven, wow! Move by Dr. Beck, I'm going to sit there, seconded by me. Kathy, if you call enroll once you're ready.
Person?
Yes.
Yes.
Not for June?
Absolutely.
Barry?
Yes.
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brady?
Hi.